Yeah, Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Gregor?
Rico?
Here. I have one consideration additional funding request by Noah's Ark. And we are asking for that additional hundred fifty thousand dollars. And Cheryl, do you want to... You said that there was funding available for this year?
Yes.
Council have any consideration on that?
Mayor, if I could please, just as kind of a point of order, I'm sorry, I would ask Council, Gregor, please, okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
That you just rejected all many discussion.
I think it was my turn I was gonna do it, so.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
You like... Yes.
Executive session.
You don't have an executive session on this?
Yes.
Well, Karen and I were talking, so I didn't quite get.
No, repeat yourself, I'm sorry. What's the ask?
No, just what we want, or just what we want. Or the funding for the funding here.
Sure.
That hundred fifty thousand dollars for this year. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, before we bring a motion to this, I want to have a discussion on it.
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
No, no. Sometimes we get into discussions after.
Yeah, no problem.
Any questions about the ask?
No questions.
Well, I don't have any questions about the ask.
Um, I do.
I mean, are we gonna have any other discussions or?
We have a pretty in-depth discussion.
Well, no, I get that, but like, being that this is the meeting and we're gonna commit a hundred fifty thousand dollars, what will the source of the funds be specifically? I mean, though it will be taxpayer dollars.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and Cheryl can talk more than I can, but we have been doing very well in our investment pool, so that's a general revenue source that we rely on. So there is a little bit of excess in that for this year, and we would take it out of that. So it's taxpayer monies that we would normally invest that have generated a good return on our investment.
I mean, so, I mean, obviously, for people that weren't present or haven't listened to that portion, I mean, we did have super in-depth discussion. We're really, really clawing at finding a way to not repeat this next year, so, I think it's something that we have to do. I did have one question, Mayor, if I may. What, I know we talk about this every time less, but what is the city's legal responsibility for maintaining that service in our plan?
And I answered that question once in writing, and I don't recall specifically, but it is an essential service that we provide. And it's, as I recall, it's like part of the public safety. I mean, you don't want animals roaming the streets, you know, and certainly not rabid animals, and those kinds of concerns are an essential government service that I would go so far as to say we have an obligation to provide.
I'm glad we have the surplus. I mean, I have no further question, Mayor.
Okay, so the discussion energy and motion, two so moved, a hundred fifty thousand, your second?
Second.
Need for the discussion? Call the vote, please.
Tabano?
Yes.
Trinago?
Epstein?
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, it wasn't in the motion, but I just want to make sure we captured in the minutes that the motion in its full length would be authorizing, releasing additional funding in the amount of a hundred fifty thousand dollars to Noah's Ark for fiscal year twenty-three.
Exactly. Okay, on to item two, per unit ordnance appropriating certain sums of money out of revenues in the city of Trinidad, Colorado to be free and meet liabilities. The city of Trinidad for fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Set ordinance being turned to the annual appropriation bill for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year, and set a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on December the fifth, twenty twenty-three, at six P M. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Okay, call a motion first, please.
Someone.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Okay, Cheryl.
Thank you.
I do, I do, thank you.
All right, I found out just a little synopsis of what we're doing with the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, the revenue for general sales tax, we're keeping at seven point eight million. We believe we're gonna reach that this year. We're optimistic that we'll reach it next year. Our marijuana sales tax has been reduced from one point seven to one point two. Again, I'll remind you that council's adopted the policy of approving marijuana expenditures after we receive them, so whether we, whatever we budget there, we don't hurt ourselves because we only budget what we've, I mean, we only expend what we've received. Our salaries and wages benefits have been adjusted to the actuals from the first, or the preliminary draft to the first reading. This, these adjustments include people that were hired during the year. It includes actual health insurance rates. When somebody comes on board, we budgeted that they got the family plan, but when we hired, they actually took the single plan and vice versa. So this, uh, this new, the first reading does include all the salary adjustments that have happened throughout the year. It also includes the two percent health insurance increase. This budget includes a police and dispatch wage increase per the classing comp adjustments, but it does not include wage increases for any other department. Two positions have been removed from the police department, which is one officer position and one code enforcement position, and one position has been removed from public works slash engineering, which was the city engineer that we had budgeted last year. However, it didn't work out, and we kept our public works director as our public works director. The difference between the draft and this reading includes two point, or two million dollars, which was rebudgeted for the purchase of the two fire apparatuses and a transfer of committed funds to the capital improvement fund for the Central Park renovations project. These were initially budgeted in FY twenty twenty-three. However, we, the apparatuses won't be here, hopefully. One will be here in January of twenty twenty-four, possibly the other at the end of the year. And then I just haven't transferred the money over for Central Park renovations because that project really hasn't gained any steam, and general fund is earning interest on those funds. So these, this expenditure is actually a commitment of reserved funds. And then also landfill fund revenues due to the election. We are moving landfill back into the general fund, so that includes eight hundred and seven thousand dollars in revenue and five hundred and nineteen thousand in expenses. The fleet budget, in order to balance the budget because of increases for PD, we reduced the fleet budget from four hundred thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand. That's our little, I don't want to call it slush fund, but if, that's where we would take the funds to balance the budget if we have more expenditures that we just, we can't meet in the general fund. And the budget is balanced with the consideration of that two million dollars from reserves for the above mentioned. Our utilities funds, salary and wages and benefits. Salaries, wages and benefits have been adjusted to actual and also includes the two percent health insurance increase. It does not include wage increase for any utility fund, and the landfill has been moved to general fund. And then finally, the most significant increase from the draft to the first reading is eighteen point four million that had to be rebudgeted for the raise grant. So we had a meeting Thursday, I believe, and it came to my understanding that we have to budget the entire amount of the grant. I was budgeting six million, when in fact we have to budget the whole eighteen million because I didn't know about the whole, the twelve million designated, I'm not sure for which group, it's actually gonna come to our bank account. So anyway, the increase for capital went in the initial preliminary, we had budgeted twenty million, and now it's jumped to thirty-two million. So that's just some highlights for the overall change from the draft to the general fund. I did highlight that we had eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in surplus for FY twenty twenty-three. That, uh, that is because we received four hundred thousand dollars more than anticipated in interest and three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars more than anticipated for severance tax and the mineral lease. Steve, I don't know if you wanted to talk about the remainder, our plans for that eight hundred thousand?
Six hundred and fifty thousand.
Which, yeah.
Six hundred and fifty thousand.
It's technically eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, but that's the one fifty.
Yeah, so, um, we're looking at using some of that money, you'll see further down as we discuss, uh, we're really not gonna be in a position, we don't think, to be able to offer salary increases to our employees. So we're looking at using some of that money for one-time bonuses this year to offset not being able to get a reasonable cost of living increase next year. So I did want to put that out there.
How much would you use of that?
So, and we, go ahead, Cheryl.
Donna has calculated, is that just for general fund?
No.
I think it is.
It would.
Uh, no, everything.
Okay.
So. So we don't have the breakdown between general and utilities, but the total is a little less than three hundred thousand, and what we're looking at doing is two thousand dollars per employee, not including police and dispatch, because they are gonna recognize a significant increase next year. And two, or two thousand dollars, but we really want to give twenty-two hundred so that after taxes, they actually get two thousand dollars, which, if we were able to give an increase next year, that would be, how much of a percentage for an increase? One or two percent?
Or they're, that's rampant?
Yeah. Average of about a dollar an hour increase. So in essence, they're getting an increase at the end of the year, which should, it would be intended for next year.
So how much total would that take out of the six hundred thousand?
Three hundred.
So we have three hundred thousand then?
Yeah.
We're gonna make a suggestion that we put that three hundred thousand away for next year's for Noah's Ark, because we're gonna have an issue, you don't have any money budgeted for them.
We don't.
So would be a good start to, or we wouldn't have to scramble in the next year looking for stuff. And unless you had some other plans for it?
I don't. However, we have scraped every single item out of the general fund budget. Police department, fire department have asked, fleet department have asked for additional and extras equipment, and we scrubbed them clean. We said, no, you're gonna have to go through marijuana. So if marijuana doesn't come in as anticipated, then again, we're gonna get another melon.
Well, you know, I mean, it's important to get all that stuff done, but with the budget.
I think you leave that alone in case for anything else, and rather than dedicating something for it right now.
Yeah.
Or at least put it on the side. So if we, you know, I mean, we're gonna have to do something, and this might be a start to at least put, you know, some of it away, at least that help us for next year.
Yeah, all, anything that's under expended will go into reserves, and then next year, should we choose to spend above what's budgeted, that's how we dip into the reserves.
Sounds good.
And Mayor Council, I just want to make one more point on the, we'll call them stipends. So it's really important, I think, this year that we do an even stipend across the board. So it particularly benefits our employees who are lower on the pay scale. Things are just as expensive for all of us, so everybody would get the same, and this scenario would be tied to whatever their salary is. So everybody gets the exact same amount to help them out for the next year. So I just want to point that out.
That'd be a one-time.
It'd be a one-time, yeah.
Sure. Oh, I was gonna ask you, you know, you reduced, or we're reducing the fleet budget by two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in advance. That vehicles need to be purchased, that money's gonna be taken from.
We would have, so we're budgeting, we went from four hundred to a hundred and eighty. Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm out. I'm counting, and I can't add. So if we, okay, so a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is appropriated, should we need more vehicles, we would either dip into reserves or see if anything is available in marijuana.
Marijuana, okay.
Cheryl? But our fleet is pretty good, because if I remember, the past six years, we've replaced a lot of vehicles, and the expensive ones.
We have, that's correct.
Fire department, so.
And also a fact, our vehicles is we can't get them anyway. Police department is trying to get new, I don't know if they're, interceptors, they're just not even making them. They're not even on the line. So they can't get them, they're buying used, and technically, that's where we stand.
So I have a question.
Yes.
If it's okay for me to continue?
The two positions removed from the PD, was that because of budget or because of... It was, so in order to meet their salary requests, or their wage, whatever.
But we're not eliminating people that they just, they have to hire.
Mayor Council, it's very important, these are vacant positions, so we're not hoping is losing their job.
Sorry, yes, that's correct.
Okay, I understand that, but maybe somewhere down the line, um, we've gotta reconsider code enforcement because of the situation that we had last regular meeting with issues with code enforcement. Code enforcement is gonna also help with animal control.
So we do have two code enfor, we do have two code enforcement officers right now, yes.
Okay, I'll bring something up at the end of the meeting, what I'd like to do later this week. Uh, the couple of questions that I had is, uh, in the water fund, there was a sale of land of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which land?
Actually, there's a portion of land in Hone, we're gonna have to try to sell. I don't have it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's a portion of land kind of south of the school there in Hone that we purchased years ago for water rights, and we've been in the process of doing what's called a dry up, so there are no more water rights available, so that land will be, will be sold. We're talking with Hone schools right now about selling or working out an arrangement for a portion of the land to go to a new baseball field for them, and potentially a soccer field as well.
Okay. Another thing that I was wondering about on this number, item seventy-six seventy-four, you know, the five hundred thousand dollars for a pedestrian bridge, could you tell us what that's all about?
Where is that?
That wasn't your project?
That's a breach down.
That's under the capital projects.
Yes.
That's a breach down here, isn't it, where the, the garden is, in that area?
No, that's probably the, I think.
I think that's where the bridge is, around that bridge anywhere else?
I don't.
Mayor, I hope, where else would we put a bridge?
I don't know.
We're troubled waters.
They also mentioned something about the trail here, too. Is that part of it, going across the river for the?
That's what we had discussed at the one, and I think it was a river crossing for the Bullboard Spanner, that could be.
I apologize, I, I have it in my notes, but.
But I was wondering if that happened this, this next budget year?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we're still acquiring land, I can't imagine it would. Probably not. So thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mayor. We will definitely look into that and see if that's something that's necessary right now.
Another thing I was noticing is that in the sewer capital outlay, it showed five hundred thousand dollars in two different spots, maybe even three different spots. I was wondering why, and I know one is partly overall, but the other part was probably expenditures, but I think you look into that?
It, it's just the subtotal, so five hundred thousand is for other capital outlay and that, that works building. And the total, it's a subtotal, I mean, it's a subtotal of that line.
So we're looking at it, the, I know we talked about that new building, that, this part is replacing that?
A portion of that, yeah.
So will that happen in this next budget cycle, do you think?
I believe so, yeah. We are, we're in desperate need of replacing the headworks building. It's been something that's a long time coming. We've been working with Jacobs, and so right now, we do have the money to move forward with the design of it, and we've hired a consultant for that, so we're hoping to be able to get it built next year.
There's a under power and light, under non-operating revenue, it shows no capital contribution, and there was no loan proceeds as well under that, but he ended this show, we'd be proud to do to explain that.
I apologize. So you said capital contribution?
Right, so you're a capital contribution?
We're projecting two hundred and fifty thousand, correct? Yes.
Well, I think that was projection for this year, but there's nothing for.
Right, so that, that capital contribution comes from the work that they're doing on the first street project, all the infrastructure that they're putting in, we're paying for a lot of capital, but it's actually a power line asset, so that's why it's considered a capital contribution from the capital fund.
What about the no loan proceeds portion of that?
We, we took out a loan in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
For the newest bucket truck, oh no, the dark digger.
Okay.
So we don't have any more purchases anticipated.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I have a clear understanding of this. At the December fifth meeting, that's when we will adopt and finalize? Okay, so we have till December fifth?
Of course, there'll be, we'll have a second meeting, and there, by chance, there could be changes. It's possible that the amount we talked about for the US, or the raise grant could be an additional five million. We're just not sure if the NSF pays for their expenses themselves, or if it comes to me also, then we have to distribute from there. So there could, there will be changes from here to there.
And we'll be monitoring revenues as well, to see if there's anything that comes in as a surprise that might help us have better revenue projections.
Well, another thing that we talked about already is at the landfill, you know, the refuse disposal, maybe increasing some of the costs there, because they're, really, they are kind of low, they are low, so I think the two things, maybe that would be something that's council really wants to consider. I know that a lot of these items of increases raise a lot of concern, but I think we're at that point now with, we have to do some of this stuff, unfortunately.
You know, I think, I don't know if this, again, germane to this, but one of the concerns I have is, unless I'm wrong, I mean, it was, it was really presented that the landfill needed to move back to the general fund to prevent that very thing, so I think, well, I see your point. I think, I mean, you really need to do everything possible before then.
Yeah, so that, like, in case that check was offered alone, maybe be less than what anticipated, so I think that would definitely, you know. But actually, the only thing in this is, I passed already, but in the past, there's always been less, I was not involved with it, but an audit review with our auditor. We did it last year and the previous years, but there was no other review with some council members, I don't think.
He, I spoke to him in October, and he was going to look at his calendar, but we just haven't scheduled it. I'll follow up with him, yeah.
Lotus, okay.
Right.
Is that Mr. Dixon?
Yes. Yes.
I had a question, maybe not budget specific, but more in general, like, how long have we had, Ally, Ally, are you waiting? Could you go?
Um, our portion of it's been done, I think, since last spring.
But I mean, when you, when you came here, Mr. Ruber, you actually inherited that project, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, that's, that's been on the books for a really long time, so this is my question to that. When we, when we put out for a proposal and had it budgeted, is it still expected to be completed for that same amount of money, or has it gone up?
We'll have to wait and see when the bids come in. It may have gone up a little bit, just because materials have increased over time. To fill in everyone where we're at on that, and we're, again, waiting on a survey, there's a portion of the work that really has to be done on the private sector side in tandem with the project, and that survey's been out there since last spring, and we haven't gotten it back. And we've definitely expressed our frustration.
Is there any way we can give another survey or?
Mayor Council, yes, really not appropriate for today's discussion, but we are looking into that for sure.
Okay, we've got a first and second on that first reading. They're done for the discussion. Call the vote, please.
I just had my question. I just noted that Lance, though, we're actually getting, looks like we're getting money bringing them under the city's, because as a, in our governmental, I think the right name. It's a governmental fund, and governmental fund doesn't recognize depreciation, the post-closure costs, they don't expect, recognize them as expensive, the audit expenses, they automatically get entered as liabilities on the financials, whereas as an enterprise fund, that you have to recognize that expense. So we eliminated the audit cost, the general fund will pick it up, we eliminated dry, or dry cleaning, yeah, dry cleaning, and, gosh, there's several that we eliminated. The closure, post-closure costs, depreciation, oh, and the, the transfers into general fund. They would transfer in for their payment in taxes, their service reimbursement, and then their IT software reimbursement. All of those have been eliminated because now they're absorbed by the general fund.
That's good news.
Yes.
So, uh, since we're announcing that we're not going to be giving raises to the, you know, staff, does that mean there's no union negotiations or?
Mayor Council, this is a general earlier for all three unions, so Mrs. Blinchich and I have the meeting with the unions on other issues, and then we will have discussions with them as to, you know, negotiating the bonuses and that type of thing after this meeting.
Okay, so, all right. Oh, and on the fleet budget, I also want to note that we put a lot of marijuana money into maintenance, and so hopefully, you know, we, we bought the lifts and we bought other things, so that hopefully, we can keep the fleet that we have purchased in good shape.
That's right.
Okay, any other discussion on the side? Call the vote, please.
Tabano?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Before we close out, especially, just want to ask Council, I had a call from a couple of council people about the two items, code enforcement and our gas increase that is upcoming, and would everybody be open to having a special meeting, final vote session on Thursday?
I was going to suggest executive sessions on it.
I'm, I'm, I'm not so sure if we needed to let, well, maybe on both, but for sure, I know the gas increase for sure, but what do you guys think?
I think that'd be appropriate on both?
Yeah. Okay. Is everybody okay with Thursday? Uh, Mayor, what time, four o'clock?
I prefer four, yes, sir.
Is, is. Okay, yeah, next week is.
That next?
Yeah, you can.
Next Thursday?
That's special.
Yeah.
Special dinner tables this week.
And a reminder, the Roundtable Wednesday?
Can I, Mr. Ruber?
Yes, sir.
I have something that I think we need to get done right away.
Okay.
The building of Hosmans, the sidewalk is closed, that's really dangerous. Why haven't, why haven't we got that fixed? I mean, people are walking in the street, winter's coming, somebody falls, are we liable for that?
The building at the Opera House is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we made the decision to close the sidewalk at the city level, just because we recognize the dangers there. I did talk with Ms. Crawford, who owns the building today, and, and her architect today, and they told me they have a plan to get someone in here to do the building stabilization ASAP. I will talk with the owner again tomorrow and hopefully get some more information.
Because we need that, we need that done right away before winter comes.
Yeah.
Somebody can fall, and, and I'm sure we'd be liable for that because the sidewalk is closed.
And that's why we closed the sidewalk, to protect ourselves a little bit more, but yeah, loud and clear, it's a concern staff shares as well.
Are we directing people across the street to use the sidewalk for something?
Yeah, or you walk around the street, give to the, that's what I say, it's really bad.
I think it just, sidewalk.
But we need to talk to her, because she's not real fast on doing stuff.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Just to thank you, Cheryl, for all the hard work on this venture, and everybody in all the department. and everybody in all the department heads, I know you all put in a lot of work, and I really, I personally appreciate it, so. This, I mean, to have this information, just like, this is pretty amazing, so thank you, Matt.
Bravo.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn, so move, second? Call the vote, please.
Tabano?
Yes.
Rodrigo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Like I said.